Welcome everyone. Today's Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and we'll call this meeting to order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the government for which it stands, one nation, under liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Frazier, if you'll lead us.
Heavenly Father, right now, we just come to say thank you. We like to thank you not for some things, but for all things. We also ask, and we like to lift up our neighbors suffering from devastations, natural and man-made. We send prayers to those impacted by the hurricane recently in Jamaica, and those battling food insecurities at home and abroad. May humanity and compassion be restored in our society where we always treat our fellow man with respect and kindness. We ask that you continue to give us the guidance and the wisdom to lead and serve all in our community for the betterment of the collective. These and all the blessings we ask, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, up next, we'll do the adoption of the minute. These are the regular and workshop minutes. Mr. Stees, have there been any changes?
None, since the packet went out.
We have a motion?
I made that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Up next is the regular meeting minutes of ten fourteen. Or is that a quarterly workshop, the way this is?
Regular and quarterly.
So was that both of them at the same time there?
No, so you have to do them individually, so when you do a quarterly workshop.
So this is a quarterly workshop, meeting minutes of ten twenty-one, twenty-five. Is there a motion approved? Come on.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Up next, we'll do presentation celebrations and recognitions. Up first would be the Beaufort County School District Student of the Month, and let's see what the other one. Okay, do not we're going to recognize our major? Tell everybody a little bit about this guy that we're talking about.
Um, I've known him since he was a freshman.
And she is a representative of Teens for Healthy Youth member. She will accept.
You, uh, will you take the mic and thank you? Perfect.
Hello, my name is Honalan Whitey Camper. I am the co-president of Mayor River High Schools THY Club. On behalf of the Low Country Alliance for Healthy Youth and their youth coalition, Teens for Healthy Youth, thank you Mayor Tumer for issuing the Smoke-Free, Vape-Free Month Proclamation. We would like to express our gratitude to the Town Council for supporting us and unanimously voting in two thousand and nineteen to amend the town's smoking regulations by including electronic smoking devices. Including vaping in the town's smoking ordinance sends a clear message to our youth and our residents that smoking, that like smoking, vaping is a serious public health issue. Thank you again, Mayor and Town Council.
Yeah. Everyone get a picture. Hey, up next, we'll start our public comment. Please listen to the public comment rules as they're on the screen, but should be able to hear them.
... Each speaker is limited to three minutes, regardless of whether the person is speaking on a telephone or an agent of others. Meaning that it means you may not donate, transfer, yield, or recall any motion of your speaking on that to another person. Comments are to be conducted in the Town Council and directed to the Town Council Federal and not to be entered or read. All speakers shall be live or excited, and those participating in any form of that meaning. Speakers shall be expected to be civil with their language and shall refrain from commenting or interlocuting on the laws disorderly speech or action, name-calling, personal attacks, threats, obscene or indecent remarks, and or disconcerted actions. All speakers shall combine their comments to issues under jurisdiction of the Town Council. Speakers shall not use the public comment period to promote or advertise their work or services or candidates for public access. Any speaker that violates the statement may be ruled out of order by the judge officer. Any person whose comments have been ruled out of order shall be seen and dismissed from the Town Council. The rules of individual to this individual's turn to vote, gain, and or expectation for section two dash four nine of the Town Council.
Okay. Up first, we'll have Jack Shear. When you come up, please say, state your name and address, and whether you live within the town limits or not.
My name is Jack Shear. I live at Eight Crossings Boulevard in the Pinecrest Community of Bluffton, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today in front of the Town Council, as well as congratulate Fred and Emily on being re-elected again. That's great news. I'm here to continue the conversation pertaining to the golf course redevelopment. Recently, there's been two independent surveys, and I wanted to share the results of those surveys with you. The original survey done in June, seventy-three percent of the property owners responded to the survey. Of that, ninety-four percent were against redevelopment. Also, six percent were only in favor. Subsequently, in October of this year, there was another independent survey where forty, forty-seven percent of the residents responded to the survey. Ninety-three percent were still opposed. Only three percent were in favor of that, and which kind of scares me, but as you heard, between ninety-three and ninety-four percent remain against the redevelopment of the Pinecrest Golf Course. We also commit, created separate committees within Pinecrest to see what we could do, discuss potential ideas that come up with some sort of a mutually beneficial agreement between Pinecrest property owners and the golf course. To date, no such meeting has occurred whatsoever. As far as I know, we've not heard from anything from anybody about meeting and discussing those options. Major concerns of the residents are obvious and paramount: traffic, safety, security, and the construction. In addition, the impact to the appearance of the Pinecrest by itself and the value of the homes is very, very concerning. The current situation is the pub is already closed. It's a place for us to gather, meet each other, get to know each other, get to know the community, and have a good time. In addition, any golfer knows that a driving range that may close, or any part of a golf course may close, could, is not beneficial to young and/or adults in general. You don't get an opportunity to learn the game, to improve on your game. So now, recently, besides the pub being closed, the golf courses now close Mondays and Tuesdays with limited hours. I believe it's, it's important to understand, the development is not worth the expense, frustration, and safety of the Pinecrest property owners and surrounding schools and businesses. Think about the major concerns. Traffic will be worse than ever. That was awful fast, because I timed this twice.
Are you almost done?
I, I am very close to being done. Safety and security will always be a concern, and the noise from the ongoing construction for months will be crazy. And finally, I'm hearing property owners are considering moving out of Pinecrest and moving out of Bluffton because of all this. Again, ninety percent of the people are over it twice in two surveys, and I thank you for your time and listening to me today and allowing me to speak. So, that's it.
Thank you.
But that was three, three fast minutes.
Marcha did that. Up next, we have John O'Edel. Okay. Up next, we have James Latchford. Is that right?
That's correct. That's an easy one. My name is James Latchford, and I'm at Austin Park here in Bluffton. My concern is, I want to know, when you go to, break away to your session, your executive session, can someone make comments before you go back into those sessions?
You can make them right now.
That's what I was wondering. Uh, I understand there's going to be a connector road that you're going to discuss, that New Riverside project over there, and I don't know what road you're referring to, and I'd like to know what road you're referring to, so I can address it properly. And I want to know if that's Holly Lane.
Yes, I'll tell you that.
And that's going to connect at some point in time to the heritage.
Correct.
And I understand that you have a committee that has already contacted Beaufort County to help foot some of that bill going into the road. That would be the turnoff. Go ahead. And that's what I was told, but we don't, we understand why it's going to be done, but the chief here will correct me if I'm wrong, that recently, there's been almost an accident a week at that, that street. And that's, you know, you have the high school there, you're going to have the junior high, of the elementary school that's being built, and we feel that it's really unsafe to have that road all the way in. Otherwise, I know why, because forty-six is a nightmare for those people getting out of there. And we all know that, because the traffic, when it builds up, it's unbelievable. But I, you know, that's, that's terrible to have that many accidents. The high school students that drive sometimes don't drive the limits, and they exceed those limits, and where this road is going to be put in is on a curve. And we've been addressing it with the, uh, with, with you all. Once again, Dan, we went through this before, but anyway, that's important to have that cutoff valve, but we really don't want it. I understand that the developer's going to go ahead and put gates on the new section of their building with no gates on our, or the old section, and that is unacceptable to us. We want gates on both ways. That way, if they do connect it all the way through, that they will not use the neighborhoods to cut through. That's all I have.
And, and feel free to contact us later.
Okay.
Or whatever, and we'll try to fill you in on a little more of the facts.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Up next, we have Brenda McPate. Pass. Up, Brendan Downey. Pass.
No.
Mayor, Mayor, one minute.
I'm going to keep it short and sweet. Brendan Downey, Two Fisherman Lane, not in town limits, but, um, here to talk about the golf carts at night. Applaud all you, because you were going to pass that tonight, but I'm here to talk about the seatbelt thing. Some of you have seen my new golf cart that's sitting out there. I have seatbelts on it, that's fine, and that all the new ones are coming with seatbelts on it, but I don't think a person like me, or anyone that's over the age of sixteen, really needs to have seatbelt use on a golf cart. Now, the kids wholeheartedly agree. Um, and it's not that expensive to add seatbelts to your golf cart. I looked at it. You can get a set of four for fifty-five bucks over at Walmart, or on Amazon, it's anywhere from fifty to seventy-nine dollars. Um, but when we were talking about this last time, the gentleman's name, I think, was Kevin. What was there, chief? Was there three accidents a couple years, last year, or the year involving golf carts? Okay. Well, I know there was one that was over near End Market, and those kids were underage, and they tipped the golf cart over and whatnot. So, they shouldn't have been driving in the first place. And that's another thing I want to talk to you about. Um, you know, again, I'm on all joy, so unfortunately, that's not in Bluffton proper. But what I see, because I'm an avid golf cart driver, is parents driving with their kids on their laps. So, I would like to add maybe a little addendum to your thing tonight, that they really need to take a look at that, because, for the love of God, if somebody gets into an accident and their kid gets hurt, that would be just devastating to you guys, and we just don't need that in this town. There's enough stuff going on. So, but all going forward, I'm glad you guys are passing golf carts at night, but let's really take a look at the seatbelt thing. I don't think anyone over sixteen and over that's driving a golf cart that goes twenty-five miles an hour needs to have a seatbelt, but that's just me. Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment. We, up next, we'll have workshop agenda item, Beaufort County, Single Use Plastic Survey Results. Juliana's.
Before that, Mayor, you have communication.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can't see. Communications from Mayor and Council. We'll start with Ms. Frazier. Mr. Wood?
Yeah, I just want to say, um, I just celebrated my twentieth anniversary with a wonderful person. Everybody up here wonders why she's with me, but, especially Fred. But, anyway, I just wanted to get that out there, just in the chance that she might be watching and win me a good point along the way, so.
Um, I'm going to speak in the middle this time, since Fred, I mean, since Dan's being so sweet. My wife's over at Palma Dunes right now, doing a catering event for two hundred people, so we can make a living, pay our bills, and help our kids, so. Kadoos, kadoos to her. She's special. Mr. Hamilton, who are you going to tell us about?
Congratulations, um, anniversary, Dan. I know she don't deserve you.
Or you don't deserve her.
And congratulations to Emily on your election. Thank you.
I would also like to congratulate you. It is an honor to sit up here with all of you, and so I'm thankful to have another four years. And I guess why we're at this, Dan, I better tell Chris happy twentieth anniversary, too. I think we were married just a few days before you and Miss Debbie, twenty years ago, so we just had our twentieth as well.
Congratulations to both of y'all.
Yes.
I've said it personally, but I, my, my pledge would start as mayor with leadership like they provide. It's my total privilege to be sitting up here with y'all guys. Okay, now, we're going to talk about single-use plastics. Ms. Juliana Zadik, Environmental Long Range Planner.
Good evening, Mayor Tumer. Good evening, Council members, and Mr. Stees, Ms. Finger. I am Juliana Zadik. I am the Environmental Long Range Planner for Beaufort County, and it is my pleasure tonight to give you all updates on steps that the county is taking to make amendments to the two thousand and eighteen plastic bag ordinance. There are several reasons why the county is considering adding five additional unnecessary single-use plastics that are not recyclable and not biodegradable to the two thousand and eighteen plastic bag ordinance. The first being that waste reduction, and especially removing unnecessary waste from our waste stream, is a necessary strategy to prolong the life of our critical, one of our most important pieces of critical infrastructure, our landfill. It also helps address litter issues in our county by reducing the amount of waste getting into the waste stream and potentially making its way into our environment, where it can threaten stormwater infrastructure from functioning properly, as well as the wildlife that we share our homes with. Not just through entanglement or entrapment, but also through contamination with microplastics, which is what plastics become when they are in the environment. They will break down into microscopic little pieces of plastic that can be consumed by other animals. They have been found in food items that we all relish here in the Low Country, including shrimp, oysters, and fish, which means that these unnecessary single-use plastics are making their way into our bodies as well. So scientists are finding them virtually everywhere they're looking in the human system, and once microplastics are in the human body, they act as foreign agents that are linked to higher rates of cancers and diseases. And one of the, the more startling facts for me that I came across through my research on this was that they are being found in the first bowel movement of newborn babies in the first twenty-four hours of life. So they're literally moving through our adult systems into the next generation. Now, we know from experience that when it comes to addressing unnecessary waste in our region, local action has the greatest impact. There's no global action to stem the tide of unnecessary single-use plastics, and there's not really meaningful action on the national level, but we've seen up and down the coast of South Carolina and the eastern seaboard that local communities can act on these items. So, with that in mind, Beaufort County Council asked staff to look at ways to improve the two thousand and eighteen plastic bag ordinance. We pulled together a multidisciplinary working group, and several members from that working group are in the audience with me, Brenda and Jean. Thanks. Um, and we came together to understand what our community wants with regard to unnecessary single-use plastics and how to address them. So we created a survey, two different ones, one for businesses and one for residents, to test levels of opposition and support for taking action on five unnecessary single-use plastics, and also to solicit feedback on the most effective strategies for regulating them, including taking no action at all. This surveys were deployed January to April, just under three months earlier this year, and to ensure that we had a robust response rate, and we could feel that we could trust the data coming from the survey as representing what our community wants to see happening, we deployed a media and business outreach campaign. And the results of that was that we received in just under three months, a whopping sixty-two hundred responses to our surveys. Now, before you on the chart is the breakdown of the geographic distribution from our survey respondents. So this is based on the zip codes that they provided us, and you can see, looking across both pie church charts, that we have a relatively even distribution coming out across both surveys. About a third of the respondents are coming from the Hilton Head and Defuski Island areas. A third are coming from the Bluffton, Okati areas, and about a third are coming from the north of the Broad region. And this tracks well with population trends in Beaufort County, so it helps assure us that the data we're looking at represents a regional consensus on what is to be done regarding five unnecessary single-use plastics. Those plastics are thick plastic bags, styrofoam takeout containers, styrofoam cups, plastic straws, and plastic utensils. This first chart here is showing residents' responses to the question, how much support or opposition do you have for acting a complete ban on each of these items? And you can see in brown are levels of support, in navy blue are levels of opposition. And we were really amazed to see how strongly our residents feel about this issue. So they want to see a reduction in the accumulation of these items. And so across the board, we have very high levels of support for complete bans on each of these items. I pulled our Bluffton area zip codes because I thought it might be more relevant for you all. You'd want to know what your constituents are thinking, and it virtually mirrors what we're seeing countywide in the trends. Our businesses also have strong reactions to this, and so lots of support for taking a complete elimination regulation on all five items, but it is notable that for plastic utensils and plastic straws, our businesses had higher levels of opposition to a ban. So that, that lends to us the idea that maybe we need to take different strategies for each of these items. It might not be a one-size-fits-all solution. And again, we pulled our businesses from the Bluffton area and see that they essentially mirror the Beaufort County trends. So, with that in mind, that we might need to take different tacks with different items, we did fortunately have the foresight to include the question, what types of regulatory action would be most effective in reducing these non-biodegradable items from our waste streams? And those are the results before you. So, survey responders had the opportunity to select none of these actions, so taking no action, by request-only regulatory action, which essentially means these items are still available, but you have to request them to receive them. They aren't automatic. Customer fee, which is what it sounds like, the fee is passed on to the customer, and a complete elimination and replacement in the form of a ban. When you take a look at the results, our residents prefer, or, um, our residents find that a ban is most effective for thick plastic bags, styrofoam containers, and styrofoam cups. But when it came to the plastic utensils and the plastic straws, we start to see by-request regulation come out on top as maybe being the most effective solution for this, uh, which makes sense, considering the levels of oppositions that we saw kind of fluctuating back in our earlier question. Our Bluffton area residents virtually mirror this trend. They feel a little more strongly that by-request only is the appropriate and most effective solution here, for our plastic straws particularly. And then we took a look at our, oh, okay, I went backwards. And then we took a look at our businesses. Um, so here, you can see that we still have high levels of preference for taking a ban action on plastic bags, styrofoam containers, and styrofoam cups, but by-request only comes out on top for plastic utensils. Interestingly, businesses found a ban to be the most effective solution for plastic straws, where our residents were more partial to that by-request only solution. And then when it comes to Bluffton area businesses, we're seeing a similar trend. And I just want to note, too, at no point did taking no action come out on top. So regu, in general, taking a regulatory action on each of these items was the recommended solution through the survey results. This reflects larger Low Country regional efforts. We've seen action taken on these items up and down the coast of South Carolina, and any action that we take here will get protections and help protect our watersheds on a bigger level. Now, on this screen, um, is a chart, and I presented this at Solo Co., but in front of you all, it's an updated chart. So we've heard cost concerns. We take those very seriously. We don't want to overburden anyone with regulatory action on any of these items. The chart on the screen are global averages, but in front of you all is a chart. The chart on the screen are global averages, but in front of you all is a chart that shows price differences between traditional plastics and eco-friendly versions of tableware and grocery bags from vendors that we can all access here locally. While there is an increase in price, it's really only pennies difference. I do want to point out, the very last item is almost 10 cents difference there. Any, the amendment that's being considered for our takeout containers to go from styrofoam to something else would not prevent any businesses from using traditional plastics. And so though that is a compostable bamboo, which would be ideal to go to if you're trying to get the most eco-friendly option, it's, it wouldn't be required. So that cost can be avoided. We also took a look at case studies about by-request only regulations so that we could understand whether or not it's an effective action to take. This is an example from Red Bank, New Jersey, that shows last year when they enacted a skip the stuff ordinance, they saw a 94% reduction in the amount of plastic cutlery leaving 16 restaurants. That means that over 1.5 million pieces of plastic cutlery were prevented from entering the waste stream, which is just over 10,000 pounds of waste. It also means that there was a 94% reduction in inventory walking out the door for these businesses, and that was just under a year. The recommendations are clear from our survey results. Our community wants to see a complete elimination and replacement for styrofoam cups, styrofoam takeout containers, and thick plastic bags. And they prefer to see a by-request only regulation enacted for plastic utensils and plastic straws. So they'd still be available, they just wouldn't automatically be given away. So where is the county in the process of exploring this issue? Well, right now, the working group is going around and giving updates to our 2018 partners in the Plastic Bag Ordinance, which Bluffton was a part of. All of the municipalities in Beaufort County did that, which is a pretty neat thing. And so we wanted to let you all know what the survey results are and kind of give you information about our intention with the Plastic Bag Ordinance. But we also want from you all inputs and feedback on how we can make this the most effective regulation possible to meet the goals of reducing these unnecessary waste items, and ultimately would love to partner with you in this effort. If Beaufort County is the only one to enact any changes to the 2018 Plastic Bag Ordinance, it's going to have a really limited effect. And so we're going to rely on our municipal partners to help us with this effort. Once we're through our roadshow, which we're about halfway there, we will start to develop amendment language, including feedback and input from you all, and begin to create an implementation plan. Here are the sources cited in the presentation, if you'd like to dig into any of this. I've also got the link in the top right corner to the full report, which was included in the agenda backup, but that's there if anybody would like to access it. And I tried to get through that quickly. If you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them for you.
Any questions, Mr. Frazier?
I do. Great information and collectiveness, definitely something that I support. I see that you have the like findings with Beaufort County. I'm interested to know, outside of Charleston County, have you done similar research to some of the counties that we neighbor, like Colleton County?
I know, I know that Charleston's really been the biggest place to do it. At Estou, unfortunately, I don't believe is in Colleton County anymore, so they wouldn't count on that. It's been, so I don't have any information on Colleton County, but I can take a look and see what I can find.
Only reason I ask is that as we have put that into effect, I think we've been complying with that the last few years. It's been effective from those who have, you know, who've been responding to it. But I know when you step outside, not too far from us, you shop in other places, you know, it's the opposite effect where many are still using plastic. So I only ask if you've done data collection for neighboring ones, just to see like how that is, how them not having or not using that, how that's impacted us.
As an impact, but I have heard anecdotally about Jasper County doesn't have any of the regulation for the plastic bag in place, and so they're still available there and will cross county lines. But our council has asked us to go to our Jasper County neighbors and inform them and see if we can develop a partnership there as well.
Okay, that was going to be my next question. So you do have plans to go into some of those?
Yes.
That was it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, this is the second time we've, a few of us have seen it, and it's in our packet. But I want to commend you, Juliana. It's a, you, you're a great pitch.
Thank you.
Delivery's perfect. The information provided is stellar. I think it drives the point on clearly, concisely. The only question I had was, and you presented this to Soloco, and I don't know if it's easier for the county, you know, your board chair, your county chair sits on that, that board, and it's an advisory committee, but lots of good things have come from Soloco. Are you contemplating maybe having Soloco help this initiative in some way to see how the other municipalities feel about it?
That would be great, yes, absolutely.
I would suggest that you maybe talk to Mayor Williams, because that's, you have us all at the table at the same time. And we just did a similar action unrelated to this on TriShare that was herded through Soloco. It's not mandatory for anybody, but again, it's, it's an easier method to see how to get everybody on board quickly if they're so interested.
Okay, and that's great information, thank you. And so I can follow up with him and, and see what sort of strategies we might be able to deploy there.
And I will say, I'm, I'm like Ms. Frazier, I, I like it.
Thank you.
Dan like it, I don't like it.
Well, that's easy enough.
Good job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Outside, it was a very thorough and educational presentation. Great job with it.
Thank you.
And I'm still waiting on some, same thing I asked for last time about some data of what?
Yes, sir.
You know, so keep plugging along.
Okay, thank you.
Let us know if we can help.
Absolutely. Thanks, everyone.
You're welcome. Up next, we'll move on to formal agenda items. Number one is an ordinance authorizing the town manager to execute and deliver such documents, covenants, easements, and restrictions in accordance with the conditions imposed by Beaufort County Council as part of the Green Space Penny Program over certain real properties to be purchased by the town of Bluffton with assigned tax map numbers. I gotta read all those printed on there.
So Mayor and Council, I'm here again tonight, as I was last month, to go through, I'm going to fly through this very quick because not much has changed since last month, but I do want to get to one slide and highlight just some progress we've made in our discussions and, and then we'll get to action items towards the end. So just as a refresher, these are on the two parcels that y'all approved the town to move forward with purchasing on. Below, between Rose Hill, south of Willow Run and that area, we are, County Council approved those for the Green Penny Program and reimburse the town. As part of that, let me skip to, after approval, we have to do two things. We have to adopt covenants onto the property, and we have to do a grant agreement for the money to get reimbursed. The grant agreement for this one and the grant agreement from the funds we're getting from the State Conservation Bank mirror each other. Our legal in reviewing those have not had any concerns. The other ones that we have to do is we have to do a covenant on the property for future use to ensure that it's being protected and being preserved as green space. So one of the things I wanted to outline is this slide, because since the last meeting we've gone through, and we've had a couple of meetings with the county to try to make sure that the uses we envision for the property in the future with the passive recreation, trails, any of that kind of stuff will be allowed. We've worked through some of the language and feel comfortable with what they've approved. That list is in front of you now, so it includes nature trails and boardwalks, environmental, historical, and land use planning education, nature viewing, low-impact parking areas, passive recreation, ponds, lakes, other passive recreations, park uses, and/or that serve as a, so if we have to do some parking for the trails, and we have to have a little stormwater, that will be allowed because that wasn't clearly defined previously. So we wanted to make sure that was included. Again, also, open-air pavilion shelters and picnic areas, we wanted to make sure that was included. So if we built trails, that there were places that people could stop and picnic and, as well. And then also the building signage and other support structures that would support any of those uses. So we were able to make sure that was clearly defined, so we wouldn't have to come back and butt heads on trying to determine meaning of words here in a few years of when we decide to do stuff. We also set out some customizable terms based on the amount of open air area, so that when it comes to disturbance, to make sure that we preserve at a minimum 85% of the foliage within the land as it is at the current time. So if we build trails, pavilions, or any of that, we make sure we keep at least a minimum of 85% green foliage coverage, which I don't think should be an issue with what the planned use that we would be looking at. And it also contains the wetland buffer language that is mirrored what council adopted earlier this year with the 50-foot buffer off of all inland wetlands. Again, thankful to Terry and his team, because they've been working with the county and their attorney to go through this. And I think we've got to a point where it's mutually beneficial for all parties. It allows us for the uses that we intend, it provides the protections that they want. And we're continuing to work on some language, but it's not really pertinent to uses, it's more just about how we define things. But we feel comfortable that we're at a level that, should council approve tonight, that anything that would be amended or addressed would not change the uses, and that legal feels that they are comfortable with signing off on that would not have to come back to council for any approval. So with that, council has, for action tonight, the approval of the term for the two grants, approval of terms for the conservation easement. And we're doing this through two readings tonight, would be the second and final reading, whoops, which is outlined here. And we, our purchase and sell agreement runs through, I believe it's tomorrow, for the due diligence. So once that expires, we'll have 30 days to close on the property, and we should be able to time everything with council approvals tonight to close and put the covenants and the grant and everything together at closing and not have to double up and do that at a later date. We're glad to answer any questions. If counsel is good to proceed, I do have a recommended motion.
Council questions, anybody? Mr. Hamilton?
Passive recreation.
Passive recreation is anything that's not programmed. So, so long as we don't do things like a soccer field, where we would be programming it, that's considered active recreation. So passive recreation, we have, every park that we've built is completely passive recreation.
And with this covenantal agreement, is it going to be done in perpetuity?
Yes, ma'am. It will be recorded in perpetuity.
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good.
We're ready to close. This one's been taken. This is our first Green Penny application, and I think hopefully it will be the longest one that we've ever had to go through. We, as you know, we have other that's going through the process now. We're hoping that will move much quicker.
With no other questions, somebody want to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion as indicated on the screen.
There, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Up next, we have consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Article 2 of the Town Code to establish rules of operation for specialized, second and final meeting, Mr. Kevin Hightower.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You are correct, we're at the second reading. There are no changes from first reading. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I do have a suggested motion for you.
Questions from council? Mr. Frazier? Mr. Wood?
No, not at this time, no, thank you.
More comment than a question for Kevin. I don't know about y'all, but I have heard from quite a few people over the last month about requiring adults to wear seat belts. And I agree with them. I, I think it's smart to wear seat belts, but I think it's unenforceable. And I don't think we are going to be able to truly enforce this. And so then I don't understand why we're creating an ordinance for it. Most jurisdictions where golf carts are legal do not require adults to wear them, but for children, they do. I think this is over government, and I don't, you know, for me, buy our seat belts for adults on golf carts, like where do we draw the line? Do we require helmets on e-bikes, which causes probably more accidents than on golf carts? And so I, I am opposed to that part of this ordinance, but everything else in it, I am in favor of.
Thank you. I'm, I'm open-minded, I, I understand. I don't want to put it on, but I, in my opinion, I think it's the right thing to do to require it. And just over the last week or two, as I was dreaming about it, waking up, thinking about it, trying to come up with something that made sense, I, it came to my mind, it's like parents set by examples. I don't know how many times I can tell you that I've seen my own kids and other kids leaving my yard or leaving at the oyster factory or whatever, car moving and no seat belts on. And I know I've said it a thousand times, if I've said it once, put your belt on. I don't think that we can say that we're old enough to ride without them, and then the state says that anyone under 16 has to. Under 12, okay. So you can drive the golf cart at 16, but under 12, so if you, I don't know. I, I just, I'm going to stick with my gun and, and to support seat belts for everyone. And that's just my opinion. So is there anyone that wants to make a motion?
Well, I'd like to jump in.
Or comment.
Please, Mayor. Here, Ms. Burden, and I know how this council feels about safety, and that's been the paramount idea behind following through on the seat belts, which I applaud. I, I guess the biggest thing for me is, is there a way to do it, you know, to exempt adults on the front end when we pass this ordinance? But what, you have to define what an adult is if you do that. Is that considered 18 and above? What's an adult in the state of South Carolina? I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if anybody does.
Just so you know, the way that the ordinance is written says all occupants. So it doesn't define your age, it just says all occupants.
The one that we're proposing says that, yes, I understand. But I'm saying if we wanted, if there was, and I don't know that if there is, if there's a possibility of modifying that ordinance for exempting adults, I guess what I'm asking the question would be, is what, where would that draw the line? Would it be 18 or 16? I mean, I, I don't know the answer. Yes, sir.
What about driver license? Sixty?
So I don't know. I don't know anybody else on council maybe feels there's movement here or not. It's open for discussion if anybody wants.
To me, it really comes down to just following what the state law is and what they approved. And that is children under 12. Again, I think it's smart to, and I think any adult can lead by example by putting it on themselves, no one's stopping them. I'm just saying, I just don't think we should require and mandate it, because I truly don't think it's enforce, enforceable.
At first, I'm not opposed to having the seat belt for all occupants, only because we've changed that conversation where golf carts traditionally were reserved for use on a golf course. And because we're now giving exceptions for it to be on the highway with other operable motor vehicles, I think the same safety measures that are recommended and almost required there should follow under that same auspices, because if a person, you know, on a golf cart is following behind, let's say, a vehicle that slams on their brakes, you know, what happens to the occupants, that vehicle, the golf cart, so because they're competing here in a sense, acting as a regular vehicle on the highway, I personally don't see the, see the detriment in adding that level of safety measurement there for those vehicles.
Um, you know, I remember back when I was all riding in the back of a pickup truck, go to Savannah, cross Savannah Bridge in the back of the pickup truck, Beaufort, I remember driving, I seen a truck, you don't see that anymore, and I guess there was a reason for it. And I just And I just want to remind everybody that ninety percent more people injured in golf cart accidents are from flaws. When you're sitting on a golf cart and you're looking backwards, you know, on some of them, you know, I've got two seats forward, one seat backward. Been watching the driver or where you're going. And driver, whether it's an animal or whether it's another car, they're just talking and listening to them. That's still a little bit, you're fucking up very easily. Adult or child. So just trying to think of these real life examples to care.
I think the chief, I think last time you pulled how many accidents have occurred in the last year? And one of them I know is by teenagers that shouldn't have been driving anyways. And I want to say.
Chief, will you go to the mic?
You've had six accidents since, since twenty twenty-four, so averaging about three a year. The most recent one involved juveniles. As far as the other ones go, I think that there was a mix between adults and juveniles operating those vehicles. I know that for a fact that there was one adult that fell from the, the golf cart that was seriously injured. Yes, ma'am.
And those are just accidents that are reported because we'd have no documentation of unreported accidents with that?
Yes.
Any other comments from council? If not, is there, make a motion. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's four to one. Four one, Marsha.
Thank you.
Number three, consideration of an ordinance in chapter six, business license and business regulations, appendix A, business license rate schedule and appendix license class by N A I C S code of the town, code of the town code as required by act one seventy-six of twenty twenty. Ms. Natalie.
I apologize. This is actually second reading. I didn't update that slide. My apologies. Good evening, mayor and council. There were no changes from first reading, and I have a motion available unless you have any questions.
Any questions from council?
No move. It's shown on the screen.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, consideration of amendments to municipal code. Two public park and boat landing rule section through thirteen thirty-eight, Oyster Factory Park. This is second final reading, Ms. Heather.
Yes. So since first reading, there have been changes made. So first reading was last month, October fourteenth. And at the time, there was, the motion was to amend the ordinances presented in your packets to remove the proposed restriction that the noise limitations for that amplified noise that we had been discussing specifically and only at Oyster Factory Park be prohibited and stop at nine P M. rather than ten P M. So the motion was that that limitation be removed from the proposal. So your packet does reflect that. Again, I'm just was struck through the change that I did make since first reading. Just to clarify, the proposed amendment still resolve that conflict, the conflicting language for special events and the noise ordinance so that our police department can enforce those limitations, those time limitations. It also adds include, excuse me, it keeps the restriction of four hours of continuous play of outdoor entertainment or music only at Oyster Factory Park and then also strengthens the violations. Just a reminder, this is what was added, the lawful noise limitations. So again, this is just the fifty decibels is measured at two hundred and fifty feet from that sound source. And the limitation is, excuse me, that amplified music is allowed from twelve P M. to ten P M. And it also, if you read that last sentence, does apply to special events unless the town manager authorizes any conditions or exceptions to that special event permit. And just highlighting that that exception has been removed based on the vote at first reading. For special events. And again, this all remains the same. And also, there's also changes that were made for the town facilities, public property, and specifically Oyster Factory Park. Again, that limitation for the times has been deleted from the proposal. However, that four hours of continuous play still remained based on your first reading. Unless there's any other changes, there's a proposed motion on the screen.
Question from council, Ms. Burden?
I do have something I would like to propose. I would like to propose that we stop the music at nine P M. Sunday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, Monday through Thursday.
Bit late Friday, Saturday. And, and amplified.
Anyone want to follow up with?
I want to hear it stated again, please, for clarity.
My suggestion is that we leave it at ten o'clock on Friday and Saturday nights and change it to nine P M. Sunday through Thursday.
No, I'm waiting to hear what anybody else says.
Clarify, is that for town wide or is that just for Oyster Factory Park?
I was suggesting just at Oyster Factory Park because that's the only place I've heard.
All of this is just the Oyster Factory Park.
Well, the noise ordinance is town wide, but then there is the exceptions here on the screen specifically only for Oyster Factory Park. The timing, yes, correct.
Well, the, the four hour duration is only for Oyster Factory Park.
Fraser?
I'm fine with the ordinance says is.
I'm going to bend if we were talking from Monday through Thursday.
He's saying Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday, time change, not Sunday.
I think doing something is better than doing nothing, you know, because this is a hot topic. And it's, you know, it's been ongoing hot topic. Personally, I, I, I didn't know we're going to propose that. I could accept that. You know, I think it's showing good faith that we're, we're hearing the people on, you know, during the week when they want to go to bed, especially this time of the year where it's dark at five o'clock. People don't want to be listening to somebody's music for five hours after sunset. I could agree with that.
Do you want to get her to make a motion?
Add into a motion and see where it goes.
Say the same except for Friday and Saturday. There you go. So based on what she said, it would, live recorded music shall be prohibited from nine P M. to ten A M. Sunday through Thursday. And then ten P M. to ten A M. Saturday and Sunday. Does that capture what you're going for?
I didn't catch all of that. I think the only thing we're changing is if music has to stop or.
At nine, Sunday through Thursday.
Right.
Yes.
He stated it.
That's, yeah. So is that?
Can I make a motion just?
You would make a motion to, you would make a motion to amend section thirteen dash thirty-eight to reflect live and recorded music shall be prohibited from nine P M. to ten A M. Sunday through Thursday. And nine P, or in ten P M. to ten A M. Saturday and Sunday. And I think I make that motion.
I make that motion that you just.
I want to state that I do not believe that would be a substantive change to first reading. So would not require this to go back to an additional first reading.
So we don't even know if that's going to fly yet, but.
We don't know.
So I understand what the motion says that music stops at nine o'clock, Sunday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, the music can go until ten o'clock.
Correct.
The only exception on timing is from Monday through Thursday. Sunday, I'm sorry, Sunday through Thursday.
Sunday through Thursday. Amplified music ends at nine P M. Friday and Saturday. It stays until ten P M.
Basically on this, and if I had my keyboard to type here, I would do it, which is going to be too clunky. It would say live and the highlighted area would say live and recorded music shall be prohibited, as the town manager said, from nine P M., nine P M. to ten A M. Sunday through Thursday.
So, you're Steven, y'all want to put this in or help us with the?
She, she, we're good. She just, she just said that she would make that motion. So we have it recorded in the minutes and we'll make sure it's recorded as was just made, defined.
So is there a second?
A second then.
Discussion?
My discussion was, is that I can't support it on Sunday, but I would support it on Monday.
About Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday?
Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday.
Ms. Fraser?
I'd support it, the ordinance, the way it was written from first reading.
So we're voting on the motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that the amended motion is approved three to two.
That, that amends what's being proposed. So now you would need to vote on the amended ordinance, the ordinance as amended.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the motion? Say that again?
I make a motion to approve the balance of the ordinance subject to the amendment.
Any discussion? Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion now? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Fraser, I didn't hear you.
No, because I oppose.
Forty-four, yes.
Okay, so that's four, one on that, Marsha. Okay, up next is number five, consideration of intergovernmental agreement with South Carolina Municipal Insurance Trust, workers' compensation protection for the town of Bluffton.
Mayor and council, so if you recall, I was here back in June to discuss us changing our insurance programs for automobile and property and things like that, from I R F. to the SMURF program. So this is part two of that change, which is going with also with M A S C. through their SMIT program for workers' compensation coverage. So just a quick background again, so we joined SMURF July twenty twenty-five, provides those insurance as you see there. It renews annually on January first. And then the other component is through state accident fund. They provide our workers' compensation insurance, and we've been a member since two thousand nine, and that also reviewed or renews annually. This is just a quick snapshot of our premiums for the last couple of years. It can fluctuate from year to year depending on the number of claims we have or experience rate factors. So that's why the twenty twenty-five estimate was a little bit high. But it, let's see here. All right. So then we started reviewing different workers' compensation insurance providers. We reviewed the South Carolina Association of Counties Workers' Compensation Trust. We look at self insurance, and then we ultimately landed on M A S C.'s SMIT program. So it provides self-funded works compensation protection for municipal employees. Part of that process, we had to do self risk assessments, just like last time. They reviewed our current policies and procedures and also made some recommendations from loss control staff at M A S C. So some additional SMIT benefits if we were to go with them. So similar to the SMURF program, there are grant opportunities available to public services and police departments for, for safe practices. We do get five percent premium credits for completing that annual risk self assessment. And then also get an additional two percent discount for members enrolled in both SMURF and SMIT. And matter of fact, yesterday morning, the SMIT program emailed out that they're returning two million dollars as a return of surplus. So that's something we would also be entitled to if we join that program as well. So the amounts that you see there, the, the state accident fund estimated premium, it's a little bit overstated. We did receive our twenty twenty-six estimate yesterday morning in the mail. It's roughly about the same, two hundred ninety-seven thousand as M A S C. But as you, when you factor in those policy discounts and the self assessment credit, we would see some savings there at that time. So with the timeline, so the SMIT board did approve the town of Bluffton on October eighth to join SMIT. On ten twenty-three, we notified of our intent to not renew to the state accident fund, didn't give them anything formal yet, just pending your decision tonight. Obviously, the presentation at town council tonight, our workers' compensation coverage would remain effective with state accident fund through the end of the year. And then on January first, our workers' compensation coverage would become effective with SMIT. All I've got tonight, this is the recommended motion as to authorize the town manager to approve the integral agreement that's in your packet. I'd answer any questions if you have any.
This will take one reading. Correct?
Yep.
Questions from council, Ms. Fraser?
Yeah, that's all the, the discount that was mentioned on the previous screen with our membership with the M A S C. Are we seeing an increase in premiums even with that discount?
So it's a, for, for the SMURF program, we, we haven't seen the, the invoice for that yet. SMIT for the twenty twenty-six, this is what our, our amount would be for that first year. And then, yeah, subsequently there on out, we would see those, those discounts every single year as long as we stayed a member.
Questions, Mr. Hamilton? Ms. Burden? There's a motion on the board if someone would like to make it.
I'm going to approve the motion as presented on the screen.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Stephen. Next, we've got consideration of an ordinance for master lease to the Don Ryan Center for Innovation in the real, for real property owned by the town and identified as county tax. R six ten zero three zero 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 two zero six six zero zero zero. Located at Progressive Street in South Carolina. Good reading, Mr. Paul.
Council, this is second and final reading. The only change from first reading. Go back to the last screen, please.
Questions from council? I just hear a motion.
Yes, yes, sir.
Someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, I'll make the motion as presented on the screen, sir.
There, a second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bridget, I didn't hear you. Is that an aye?
I had the aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Marsha.
We do have action.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Michael Setcliffe to the Historic Preservation Commission with a term starting January 1st of 2026 and ending June 30th, 2027.
Aye.
Any discussion?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have action.
No, no, we have one more. I make a motion to approve authorizing the town manager to sign an agreement for engineering services between the Town of Bluffton at Beaufort County and Village Park Communities LLC for engineering services for the development of plans for the future construction of Holly Hill Lane from New Riverside Road to the entrance of New Riverside Park.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Action unanimous.
You make the motion.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn.
(laughing).